Yat e abene, Vice President Myron Lizer here. Nabo Nation, welcome to our town hall, COVID-19 update. And of course, we don't want to focus too much on the COVID. We're looking to bring the numbers down and then start getting ready to open, bring back our people and just provide encouragement. So first, let us open up in prayer as we always do. Khat, chidi an god, bohoni hi god, and we give you praise this morning. Thank you for another day of life. Thank you that we can come to you, Lord, and pray and lift up others and encourage and come alongside and take up the burden of those that need it, Lord. We pray that you reveal to us those that truly need it, Lord. Let us come by their side and help and assist and, Lord, provide a leg up, Father. We thank you, we thank you. We thank you that as we come to you, Father, we pray for many things. But first, Lord, let us be humble before you. As we come to you, Father, let us be wiped clean, be washed clean, Lord. The watering of your word and the cleansing of your spirit, Lord. Each one, one by one, Lord, we know that we need something more than ourselves, Lord, as we reach out and ask and as we receive, Father. Lord, you'll hold no good thing from us, Lord. You wish that none would perish. So Father, we thank you again as we come to this town hall update. Father God, give us words to say, Lord, and let the people hold on to those words and be encouraged to be strengthened, Lord, and that hope will be given, Lord. For without hope, Lord, there's really nothing to look forward to, Lord. But you are the God of hope, you are the God of the encore. Lord, we thank you. We ask that as we given second, third, and fourth, and 77 chances, Lord, Father, that you'll be there, you'll never leave us nor forsake us. So Lord, we thank you and ask you to be with our people, Lord, healing all across the land. And give us wisdom, Lord, in this town hall meeting, Father, from President on down to all of the data, Lord, that's given, that's been collected. First, we're thankful, Lord, for those workers that have been put in harm's way, Lord, and they rarely go out fearlessly, Lord, just working because they're caring for somebody else, Lord. They've taken the eyes off themselves and they've placed it on another person, Lord. Therein lies the kingdom of God, Lord, Father, to just consider our brothers and our sisters more highly than ourselves, our very own selves. Thank you, Lord, for revealing that to us, Lord. And as we focus on that, Lord, you'll expand everything to us, Lord, Father. Then if we would just commit to you the things that we shall, we will be successful. So thanks, thank you again, Lord. Khat an god, khat, thank you, Father. We give you praise in Jesus' name, amen, amen. Shee Myron Lizer, Nabo Nation Vice President. Comanche Nishla, Tolhana, Basixchin, Aro, Comanche Deche, Klash, Tidashanelli. It is good to be with you this morning and look forward to kicking it off with our very own President Jonathan Nez, who's been explaining exemplary leadership in this fight against COVID-19. And you know, we look forward to hearing the data and the numbers, which he so eloquently gives to you all. And you know, I pray that you all receive it with an open heart. And all of you that, you know, choose to focus on the negative, that we just remain positive and we hear the data and we hear the leadership and we respond to it accordingly, as he is the leader in the land. So appreciate you, Mr. President. Take it away, ladies and gentlemen, Jonathan Nez, the Nabo Nation President.
Good morning, yat e abene a noktsoga re. Dan ichi nalligidoo, da isunoltsagi. DJ ya August 25, 25th gune, yoll kall do, na ki jinda. So nisunigoshin ekku, yina nish dal i do, aro ahala nhasan ishi do. La na nish etel, aro kudo eya, di kusinskagi nhas et saada. Bandahui lne, na ki jinda, nishuna, do di jinda, nishuna. Aro koe eya, i nixalchin, i kei nlanegi. Benana shid etl, negi do, edo bandahui lne. A kuech benana shid etl, i do, bahe, da nietsen, aro batso dilzen. Ajo kada demo, demo do bala, eya, nihewa shinto, do kujin naxan dal nishigi. Eyya, nihewa shinto, analia. Akonde lai, anee ahagandan dahaztka, aahagando dal nish. Benina gi do, aro onikki, kiu, lahan deitle, nane gi jo ey benach. So a, anle, dal nish, nde a, ahot. Jo lahan a re, naxan dal nish, so ey benina eya. Has tka, kesala do bala, inzar, eyota eya, ajo. Naxan dal nishigi, kota inzar, eyota. Kota a dal nish do lel. Dahno, ey khat, bindil nisho, dey shkei rosh. Aro koe do, bandahui lne. Di khat, i khaagi, 2020 biye, eya, dene, da yoll tka tlaya. Le, isladin hahot zogo. Khila, hanelte, nihie kei, nihie dene, di isladin hahot zogo. Keda hat eh, hat no, jo ey kou, Arben Mitchell kou naxa. Ichi chre, astra naiil, jo ajo ey nal nish. US Census eya nal nish. So ey benina ey kou, di naaltsoos, kha dalle, computer biye, ey, bich ndaa le. US Census bich. La shi eya, la ajo ndal nishgi, la, naxan eya akonde. Ishi ey daral kall, naaltsoos do, haishi bahan negi. Daral kall, dor na begi, ey koe, naaltsoos egi do, haishi badahan negi. Koe, bahanda ille. Edo, kodo, ltsko dalle, post office biye, bich ndaa le. Dahno, kota eya, kodo, nihijoba deeni kej, kei rosh. So kuda dalle, jo ey bena, jo ey kou, nihika na algu. Jo kou, di beso giya, ey be, ka na, nihika na algu, Washington. De, jo ey kota ey, dene de yoll tka agi benach. Jo 2010, dah, 2010 yoll kall ne, dah eya, kota da ilaya. Aro tka nezna di, demiliaje, do bala, hanelte, o, et dene niitle. Hado, ni, jo ey kota dene de yoll tka agi benach. So di khat, 2020, ishigi, jo ashi kada la, dene niitle. Bala, shi kha, tka nezna di, demiliaje. Ey benina, ey kudo, kota dalle. Di nezna di, demiliaje, isla, daa ze, dene, nezna di, demiliaje, hanelte. Kadha, so dasi, kli, nene, kline, ebina, i kudo, naaltsoos, bich ndaa le. US Census biye, aro kodo shee, Arben Mitchell, ya, nato, dey shina. Aro, di kusinskagi, nhas et saada. Di naaltsoos, nichi, konde, nihie naxan dal nishgi. Yego da ichta, yebana shid etl, nihie kei, da des, nihie ndech khaagi. Jo ey kadi che eya, na di, do na ke, demiliaje. Na di, do baan, na ke, demiliaje. Do baan, tka nezna di, do, ishla di, do baan, CP. Hanelte, o, ey kou, ndaskha, la shi eya, tes, adani hi di tla. Di swabs da, tga, i, but shi, huna, ndaili, i, no, ey jo ey kota, ey tes ndaili. Iaron le, hosdo, do, do, kujin, bel dil, jo ey, bich, huna, i, aro, aletna, ta, ey, o, daa ze, do, daa daa ze, hado. Dan ichi, no, ey kota, do kusinskagi, la beda do, na, o. Nhas et ey, demiliaje, nhas et ey, demiliaje, do baan, isla, nezna di, do baan, has tkan, di, do baan, sosit. Hanelte, o, ey kou, nihie kei, nihie nane. Anle, February, March, eh, dah, do di, jini, jen, August, jen. Jo eyota, hanelte, o, ey kou, di kusinskagi, beda do, na. Aro, la ey, di nhas et ey, demiliaje, ishne giya. Ichi daaskhaegi, ayat eh, ndasklenge, eya. Has tka. Sosit ye, sosit demiliaje, sosit demiliaje, do baan, has tkan, has tkan di, do baan, tka. Sosit demiliaje, do baan, has tkan di, do baan, tka. Hanelte, o, ey kou, ayat eh, ndasklenge, nihie kei, nihie nane. Jo batso dilzen, aero ta, ichi daaskha, di kusinskagi, nhas et saada, di naxne. Akonde, di nezna di, do baan, na di, do, di. Di nezna di, do baan, na di, nhas et di, yeah, I'm sorry. Nhas et di, do baan, di, hanelte, o, ey kou, nihie kei, nihie nane. Magal, magal, daas, di, do, ishi, ey kou, da jeten. Ey kou, batso dilzen, shkei rohlin, nihie kei, nihie nane. Kou, itzata jetenigi, be, bekei dan, lenigi, shi, ey kudo, bena, daa, do, bichei daas. Hoto, eya, batso dilzen. Aro, le, Washington, eh, do beso, nichi chre, dey, taya. Eyya, CP, CP, demil, yaj. CP, CP, do baan, di tzata, demil yaj. Hanelte, o, demil soye, na naadishne ya. Sosit, do baan, di tzata, demil so, hanelte, o, ey beso, chre, dey, ta. Ey Washington, de, ey kudo, ey di, di kusinskagi, nallni, nihie gi, ey, nihijekoliya. Ey, nihie kei, nihie nane, bichekodalia, do, nihidoo, nihewa shinto, je. Ha shitao, ey, shitadohne, hat no, ey, jo ey beso, nihijechre, dey, ta. Nihilpeh, dehose, beslo, she, da noksa. Kudo, nas kudo, znil. Aro, di do, phones, cellphone, bich, jo, ba, le, kado, do. Chahaagi, jo ey do, jo, nadal nish do lel. Aro internet, do biye, ahot, a, eya, kudo, hane, atschi lo, nihichre, kodal, kodal, i do lel. Aro karin naxalchin, ahagandan dahaztka ya. Aro, la nihie kei, nihie nane, ahagando, ey dal nish. Ey benina, ey internet, nihie eya, yo, dal nish do lel. Do, nas do, la kuda do, nil, dahno, dah, bayatke. Jo ey beso, ba, bela, azlin, akho, edo, aro kujin Washington, je, naxan dal nishigi ya. Edo, badahui liya, do lel, do, di mask da, tga, gi do. Tkalawashi da, tga, gi do. Ey, ban da hadilne, do, ey kota, ey dal nish do lel. Kota, ey, di chrosto itini, ey, do, beda, da lneht, do lel. Da di, no, kota, ey beso, la chre, dey, ta. Akoi, di, beso, chre, dey, ta, nage ya. Chiyanla, ndahadilne, da di, ni, ey kou, nihie kei, nihie nane. Di di kusinskagi, beda do, na, gi, jo ahagandan dahaztka, nigi. Chiyan, bich, kudo, nil. Ahayda, danzenegi, ey, yinachi ahagandan dahaztka, do lel. Do, ey nlego, tka da, dekhat, do lel. Di nallni, gi, be da halon. Jo ey benach, ey kou, yego, ey nallni, o. Ey benina, ey di di kusinskagi, nhas et et saada, beda do, na, gi ahagandan dahaztka, do lel. Ey, nezna, demil so, hanelte, o, beso, ba, bichealiya. Ey, ey benach, ey kou, chiyan, do, haishi klin, be daal, nigi, ey, ban dahui dilne. Ey, kota, bichekudo, nil, dahdi, no, kota, eyya, bela, da si klin. Na ki, demil so, hanelte, o, ey kou, di computers da, tga, gi, jo di, be da, neshigi. Edo, ndahadilne. Di kujin naxan dal nishigi, la ahagandan dahaztka, la bich, ndahazti. La eyya, has tkan, di, do, bala, bendah, kego, ey ahagandan dahaztka, do lel. No, la eya, a, a, nas, nishla, eh, be basola, eh, a, 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 nadal nishid, do lel. Akonde, la eyya, bich, bich, ndahazti, naxan dal nishigi, ey ahagandan dahaztka, do lel, da di, no. Ey kota, ey di, computers da, tga, gi phones da, tga, gi ban dahadilne. Ey kota, ey, ahagando dal nish do lel, da do, ni. Tka, demil so, do baan, isla, nezna di, en, beso. Ey kujin eyya, di, nihemasa, nihichche, nihinala, do, nihie kei, nihie nane, zel, ene. Ba dahoyan, nigi, eyya, di bathroom additions, ye. Di kujin, beso, ba, ba, ishta, ishta, do, nallhi. Jo tku, nas kudo, nil, no, ey ba, ishta, da di, neht, do lel. Ey bathroom be da halon, do lel. Jo di beso, gi, chre, dey, ta, nigi, oni, isperson ya. Nihemasa, nihichche, nihinala, nihie kei, dan, lenegi, yego, bich, nas, te, gi, ey, isha, do lel. La shee, aita, a, 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 ndilne, sto, la ey ahagande, da si, tka, nichi, ndali, yego, nihuxi, ndes. So ey, nihixi, eya, aya, da nokt, eh, son, nish, benina gi, eyya, iska, nachya. Do, kodo, nihie kei, nihie nane, do, bika, nachya, gi, bahe, nietsen. Ako, la ey, asahan dahaztka, nihemasa, nihichche, nihinala. Edo, bekei, da, de, be badahui liya, do lel. Ey, be di beso, chre, dey, ta, nigi, ey, bika, neil, o, do lel, da di, no, kota, nihijoba deeni kej, ey nallini. La, dini, ndak, khaegi, shido, shisna, dahno, dah. A, a, bena, nish, a, nadal nisho, nde. Jo di eyya, di di kusinskagi, nhas et et saada. Di nallni, gi, bich, ndahazti, egi, ey, isha, do lel, dahno. Do, ey aji, ke, a, ltsko, nihie kei, nihie nane, beso, bichekoldneht. Bich, ndahazti, egi, ey, isha, do lel, shkei rosh, nane. Nihijoba, inxkei roh, dey shne. A, ko, beso, hatne, ko, ahagandhasan, nde, a, ahot, mado, ye. Che masan, anal, nahl, nengi. A, ko, beso, benach, sahle. Aita, koe, nde, basah, azlin, shido, dahno, dah. Shido, tlo, de, kej, stinigi, do, daa ze, beso, shichekudo, nil, dahno, dah, ya, daatke. Akho, bich, ndahazti, egi, ey, isha. Kou, la nihemasa, nihichche, nihinala, asahan dahaztka. Asahan dahaztka. Kou, bich, jo, ga, ha, ey, daan, nil, la, la. Chalchin ey, har, shi, ndak, leer, da, oltcha, leer, benana shi, da, edetl. Shitso, ke, shinali, ke, do, ndesha, ndak, xada. Dahno, ndahaztka, go, eh, shkei, nallini. Bahajo, ba. Akon, nihie, kudo, washi, do, je, naxan dal nishigi, nihed, badahui liya. Hey, she, ey, gesi, basola, ndesni. Lchshin, no, lenegi, otso, ken, no, lenegi, nol, ken, no, lenegi. Nihie, naxansola, do, ey Washington, basola, do. Ey benina, ey kudo, di beso, chre, dey, ta, nigi, ey, be, nihemasa, nihichche, nihinala. Chen, ndahazti, egi, asahan dahaztka, nigi, ch, eh, da, t, nigi, ey, bika, di, che. Lchshin, she, itso, ken, nali, ke, da, eya, shon. Beso, edetl. La, adan, eya, nihemasa, nihichche. Do, nde, beso, shichekondaali, da. Shee, kudo, biyahol, a, ey, nlego, nas, bike, sezon, akonde, do, ndesha, ndak, xada, dahno. Bahajo, ba. Kou, nihemasa, nihichche, nihinala. Eh, da, nane. Ey benina, ey di, beso, gi, ey, la, ban, do, nall. Aro, la, do, bich, ndahazti, ya. Nihie kei, nihie nane, zel, ene, ba, dahayaj, aro, ahagandla, ndahaztka, kou, CHR. Naxan dal nish, edo, ke, de, bala, na. PH Shin, Public Health Nurses, da, tga, gi, da. Senior Citizen Program, jo, ey aji, ke, des, in, naxal. Nihemasa, nihichche, nihinala. Aro, tka, demil so. Ey, ya, di, kou, zel, in, ndaz, nengi, 638, anee, deeni, ye, degi, deeni, ye, degi ya. Nane, tunne, stizid, winsload, o, kujitse, sehutso, jo, do. Aro, Utah Nabo, ey do, beso, la bich, do, do, nil. La ey aita, Washington, je, ey, ya, dahliya, do, beso, bich, kunda, eya. Indian Health Service, tunne, shee. Aro Gallup Indian Miracle Center, aro Toche, aro Crown Point, je, da. Jo ey aji, Washington, ey, zel, in, da, ne, ey, yoll ye. Ey aita, beso, bich, kodal ya. Akon, nihie, kujin, nihie, deeni, ye, eri, nihie, do, deen, no, lieri, gi. Ey beso, bich, kudo, nil, la, ishi, deen, zenegi, la, mask, da, tga, gi, da. Aro, ndahirohne, da di, no, o, da. Aro, na ki, demil so, hanelte, isla, nezna di, demiliaje, ey kou, kujibdi, beso, ichi, da des. Igi, jo di kou, naaltsoos, kha, dal ya. Bandahui lne, she, do lel. Jo ey kota, nihilpeh, dehose, do lel, shkei rosh, nane. Beso, gi, choda, o, di kota, ey, chodaz, in. Dahno, astra, nihichre, astra, ne, dalna. Edo, basah, lon, da, do lel. Ahot, a, be, ka, o, o, da di, no. Nihichre, astra, ne, dalna. Ey kota, yin dal nish, do lel. Jo beso, dey, o, asati, bason, nello, ey kota, ey beso, naaltsoos, bich, kada, ile, do. Aro reports, da, edetl, i, do, lel.
Cepi, cepi tino ba a'ashla, demilsohanelta, e pesova niitnel. E khoon nashniri ndelkha, do haaxin ze bahalon dolnel. E ze bahalon dolnel, cho e peso she bahalon pa'ahliidolnel. E do a'atskhilko, ze bahazlne, o e leidnavi, bicheku dozni. Sashid odan zen damde, sashid en zen, cho e kot a e pesova isle niitnel. So e a'atsko, nezna t'ehelte, eh oh, di jinjen, di thago ne. Beshba hasaniyela na aslingi, e di nezna tino ba a', sosced, tino ba a'ashla, demilso, hastha nezna tino ba a', hasthan tino ba a', hastha, demiliyay, do ba a', la nezna tino ba a', nahast e, nahast e tino ba a', nakhi. Nezna t'ehelte, eh kot a bela aslin. So a'atsko, di thaa, na'zos, beshba hasaniyela na aslingiya. A'atsko, lkihi thago, a do, eh ya, itsehiya di sosced, sosced nezna tino ba a', t'itsada, demilsohanelta, e peso chudet ayah. A do, khoon di thago, beshba hasaniyela na aslingiya. A'atsko, alhinet ago, kad peso itsehi. Eh ya, alla, nezna t'ing, do ba a', sosced, sosced tino ba a', sosced, demilso, do bela nezta, eh aitsi. A do khoon eh ya, na'zos, la nas konanaliya. Di itsehi eh ya, di nihike, nihinebichen, da hasit egi, e pesogi bicheku dozni. Da di no, cho nchalkshen kad da'altcha, hotatda'altcha agi, hotatda'altcha agi. College, e do la pesova bandonnel, la chi chedat, la kot a hana nihichegu dalla. A do di do propane, yeh masan, yechen nerdi kad khaygo ya. E do bicheku dozni, e ot a'ashte, da'alt nehtolnel. A do di odaltisi gi da'altcha agi head start, e do la pesova bandonnel. Da di ni, a do khoon bit e riya, la chi eh ya, don dal neh shigi, e do la bekado, bekad ichet, da di no, e khatiin demilsohanelta, e peso la bandonnel. Da di ni, a do businesses a'jdo, shopping center, na liha ba'ganje, e do. Hota e pesova bandonnel. So di be'aslin ko go, eh a'atsko, she, di peso Washington de, bichet chudet. A ne, eh a'atsko chudasili in dolnel. Benina gi eh ya di December 30th go ne, ya, naish, December go ne. Eh kot a, eh be'ahdo, e benina, e'atsko kodoe, pesogi chudadi ilgilt, da di no. Hota eh ya, bahashnetolnel, oko, di kad, beshba hasaniyehana na chegi she eh ya andat inolnel. So e'atsko, chudasili ino, e khoon bed, denishtolnel, ke'osun, e on hishazenolnel, nekichet.
So I just explained a lot Navajo, and I'll explain this in English. First of all, I wanna talk about the census. So Eli, if you wanna put up the census response, remember, we did a challenge to the Navajo people to self respond to the US Census. And so we're wanting the Navajo people to, you know, fill out the forms, submit it on the internet, or mail it back into post office to count all the individuals within your household. It's very important, as you all know, it's resources that come into the Navajo Nation, it's political representation. In 2010, we had about over 300,000 Navajos, or now 300,000 people who identified themselves as Navajo. And 10 years later, you know there's more. And so we need to get an accurate count, ladies and gentlemen. Or else, you know, we forfeit in a way, some of the resources that are supposed to come to the Navajo Nation. And so I challenged everyone, we don't have the numbers for Sunday yet, and yesterday's numbers. But if you look at the chart, Fort Defiance Agency, good job. For Defi, those of you that are living in Fort Defiance Agency, yours, your census response rate is at 20.9%. Of all the five agencies, you are number one. Now that I said that, Chinli, Western, Eastern, and Northern, you know, here's the time to step it up. Chinli Agency is the lowest, at 14.8%. And Western Agency, 17.5%. Eastern Agency, 17.7%, Northern Agency, 17.4%, which has an overall response rate of 17.6%. I know we can get up higher than 25%, ladies and gentlemen. Let us shoot for that. And those of you that are on the internet, you know, you could do a self-response as you're sitting there, listening in. We will include, Eli, or whoever, include the website to the comments, let everybody know that it is, Arbin will tell you, it's UScensus2020.gov. You have a little bit more information. So let's challenge each other, we're gonna look it up again on Thursday. Let's see if we get those numbers up next week. Let's challenge each other, agencies. Ma, Western Agency, I know you can do better, I'm saying that because I'm from Western Agency. Let's self-respond, let's get up past 20% within one week. We challenge you, this is a friendly competition between the five agencies. Let's see who can get to the top by the end of September, cuz that's the deadline for the census. So we have some time, let's bring those numbers up. And so, and then the update on COVID-19. 92,358 people have been tested, that's over 45% of our total population. Those positive tests, 9,567. So if you can bring that slide up, Eli. The tests completed, and the negative tests, 78,166. And if you look on the right-hand side, those are 24-hour numbers from yesterday to today. So 470 tests were completed. Negative tests in 24 hours is 556 negative tests. And positive tests in 24 hours is 10 positive tests. So we are on a downward trend. Continue to wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands with soap and water. We'll be, you know, last week I said we were gonna be in Crown Point on Thursday. I just wanna let you know, it will be Friday, because our shipment of hygiene items will not be in until late Thursday, early Friday. So that way, we can hand out some of those hygiene products. And we're gonna start handing out soap too as well, you know. It's always good to get a free bar of soap, right? You know, you can wash your hands at home, or in your vehicle, as you're going from one stop to the next. So hand sanitizers, you know, of course, hand sanitizers are for your hand. It's not to ingest, alright, ladies and gentlemen? It's for your hands. I know some people are saying, hey, why are you handing out hand sanitizers? People are starting to, you know, induce that. Come on, people, let's all work together, all of us, and hold each other accountable out there. And it's not to drink, it's not to mix, it's for your hands. And it's because of those emergency calls that mess it up for the rest of the Navajo people, when they could get hand sanitizers. And it's a pandemic, and it's needed here on the Navajo Nation. So let's not mess it up. If you know somebody that has an issue with substance abuse, don't give it to them. Of course, they're not gonna be driving, going by a checkpoint if they're under the influence. So however they get it, is gonna be from someone who received a hand sanitizer. Let's hold each other accountable, Navajo people, please. Be aware of your surroundings. 9,567 positive tests, 7,600, 7,063, I'm sorry, have recovered from COVID-19. We have one additional death 24 hours, which brings the total to 494. Let's continue to pray for them, let's change the slide. Eli, let's continue to pray for our people that are testing positive, that are, their families have lost loved ones. You know, I just wanna say this too, contact tracing is happening all over the Navajo Nation. Please keep that in mind. Because if you do leave the Navajo Nation, see, all these contact tracers work together. Not just on Navajo, but all in the region southwest. And I said this before, I said, if you sneak off the Navajo Nation for one weekend, to go to a bar, whatever, if you go to an event, contact tracers will find out where you have been. So if you think you're sly, and you're keeping everything a secret, and if you bring the virus home, these contact tracers will find out where you've been. And it's not gonna look good when you spread that virus to your Navajo family members. Cuz they're gonna look at you and blame you. I mean, that's just what the first reaction is gonna be. But all we could do here is to stay here on the Navajo Nation. If you look at the numbers, you know, the downward trend is happening, we got the cases that are going down. Yesterday was at 10. And if you look at the aid service, the areas, the units here, all of them are starting to look like they're coming down on a downward trend. So I wanna commend those of you that are taking this virus serious. I know it's easy for us to let down. It's easy for us to say, ah, it's coming down, we're not gonna catch it, let's just open, you know. Please don't think that way. There is no vaccine, there is no cure for COVID-19, ladies and gentlemen. So let's take this seriously, please. And continue to wear our masks, social distance, clean our hands, wash our hands, use hand sanitizers, and stay home as much as we can. You know, there was a lot of traffic on Saturday. And I was saying, oh, people are getting prepared, I try to stay positive. People shouldn't be traveling, or even visiting. The reason why we opened Saturday was that we prepared for the winter. We prepared for the winter. And the winter is being said to be a possible second wave of COVID-19. So let's not have that happen by preparing for the winter. Now, everybody has been commenting about resources that are for Navajo citizens, Navajo residents, what about the Navajos off the Navajo Nation? What, we still are Navajo people? You know, this, there's a limited amount of resources, ladies and gentlemen. And that is the reason why I've been saying, it's not per capita, it's not entitlement. It's not like you're entitled to this, right? It's to help those that are struggling through this pandemic. Some of us were working, some of us were at home during this pandemic and getting paid. And some that worked off the Navajo Nation decided to stay home to take care of their families. Because their family members said, dad, mom, don't go off the Navajo Nation, you might get the virus and then bring it home. So they stayed home, but now they're struggling. There are many people that are, I said it in Navajo earlier, our elders are struggling. We visited some elders right now, sitting there on a daily basis by themselves. And I'm gonna step on some toes here. And since it's winter, we need to prepare and help our elders. There was an elder that we visited, she started to break down and say, nobody visits me. Nobody even gives me money to help. And here, I raise these kids. And that lady, that grandma says she struggled raising these kids. And when they got older, they just left, and now grandma's there by herself. Those are the people that should be helped. But it's not on government to help our grandparents, or even our parents. It's on us. But those that are struggling out there, I appreciate the public health nurses, the community health representative, the senior citizen program, the chapters, to go all the time, to go over there and check up on our elders. And those staff more know, more, know more about the elder and their families than her own family members. And so let's not have this happen during the winter, everyone, ladies and gentlemen. We need to help. And so when you start saying, need to, and give me some money, and I'm struggling, and start blasting all the negative comments on the Facebook, remember that. That there's an elder, bahachow pa'asaseta. There's an elder there that is by herself, himself, that is struggling. And there is no means for maybe even getting to the store. Those are the people that we should be helping. I know those are other, there's other stories out there, I've gotten, Vice President has gotten a lot of emails. People struggling, I understand that. Some of us are well off, we're okay. We're okay. And this is, again, not per capita, it's not equal distribution for everybody. It's for those that are struggling, that are following the protocols of staying home. Some of them are staying home, they don't wanna go to the store. And we bring them food and supplies. CJN 4720 was approved in a total amount of 21, if you can bring that chart up, Eli. $21 million, or $21,593,000 in Tinsen. This is the fourth time I'm breaking this down. So some of you don't read the press releases, I encourage you to read the press releases. Don't read, just read the title, read the press release. Cuz a lot of your questions that you're asking, if you read the press release, you will know the answer. You're, you know, listening on these, they're recorded, you can go back, you can play it, you can pay, take it to your grandma and grandpa, and play it for them. Let's step up as citizens. CJN 4720, way at the top of the post, they have 10 millions for water and basics. Those are for food and supplies for those that have come down with COVID. And if a family gets COVID, we isolate them, we get them the need, the food. And that's why the numbers are going down. See, these contact tracers, Doctor Jim and Health Command Operations Center, once they find out somebody is COVID, they isolate them, and they keep it there so it doesn't spread quickly. But in order for them to stay in one place, or stay isolated, we gotta give them food, we gotta give them supplies, cleaning supplies, so that they can get through 14 days or even more. And that's what that $10 million is for. If you can go back, Eli, to the big chart, computer hardware, $2 million. Some of our employees are in that most vulnerable category. And so they're working with the divisions and the programs and their bosses, so that they can stay home. And they need equipment, computer, cell, whatever they need at home, so that they can do, cuz we can't have everybody come back at the same time. Bathroom additions, $3.5 million. Those are for our elderly and our high-risk patients, so that we can get them prepared if the water, when the water comes into the home. They need bathroom additions. So in an amount of $3.5 million, there's an allocation of bathroom additions. Healthcare assistance, $3 million. Healthcare assistance, $3 million is for the 638. Those are under Navajo or local leadership, they have their own board, right? Winslow, Tubus City, Utah Navajo Health Systems, Sansoi Medical Center, Sageville, they have their own board, they're under government. So we need to help them, we put $3 million for whatever their needs are. The IHS facility, Cayenta, Chinli, Shiprock, Gallup Indian Medical Center, Crown Point, you know, those facilities are getting money from the Indian Health Services, and they're okay. Help to Navajo Nation Financial Office, $2.5 million. That's to keep track of all these dollars, so that we can continue to be transparent, give you a breakdown on how these monies are being utilized. And so $2.5 million is gonna be there to oversee all these dollars, you know. The Navajo Nation Office and the Controller has to do their everyday stuff, you know, they have to cut checks for vendors, whatever, the everyday stuff. And then now they have $714 million that they have to oversee and to be accounted for. So they have to have some help, and that money is there for help. So of all that, $21 million was approved. And there were three line item vetoes, and we'll come back to that with the new monies. CJN 4620 is $21 million for special duty pay, hazard pay. Those are in the process right now, some of the police officers already received some of the hazard pay at the beginning. Those are for people that were working on a daily basis, being around COVID all the time. Police officers, seniors, CHRs, those individuals on a daily basis, you know. $21 million. The personal protection equipment for $10 million, of course, you know what that means. More masks, gloves, hand sanitizers, things that make, so that government can continue to run. And we need those resources, so that we don't have to be closed down all the time. And last Monday was the opening of the Navajo Nation Government. And so we're gonna have to bring those down, purchase those, and bring those down to our Navajo Nation employees, wherever they may be throughout the Navajo Nation. Safety assurance facility, $10 million, that's reconfiguration of office space. Six feet, social distancing, plexiglass, changing up the office interior so that people stay safe. Now, there's no vaccine, no cure for COVID, so we're gonna have to start, you know, keeping our employees safe. So $41 million in that resolution, CJN 4620. The recent one, the third one, the third resolution that was approved by council that we enacted into law is CJY 6720. CJY 67, okay, those of you that are listening, you're saying, where's the water, where's the electric? Here it is, I'm gonna tell you, okay? Water projects, $130,595 for water projects. And that's for drinking water, that's for livestock, and the needs for water. Some of these we had to change around, because it could not be completed by December 30. We're still using December 30th as the deadline. Because there's, we do have a bill in Congress to extend the monies, extend the deadline, but, you know, it's just sitting there. So right now, we're just gonna use December 30th as the deadline. Power line projects, $44,22832 for power line projects. And those are projects that need, those are like within of close vicinity to the existing power lines. Telecommunication and broadband, $53,224,989. And that is for better broadband, better cell service in rural parts of the Navajo Nation, and try to get it closer to the chapters, try to get it closer to the Navajo citizens. Solar projects, $35,192,000 for solar projects throughout the Navajo Nation. We're working with NTUA on them. Hardship assistance, as you know, there's only $1,000 on there, but I'll come back to that because we're gonna put some more money in there, into hardship assistance. Parks and Recreation, those are the vendors. You know, we've been, the parks and recs have been closed, our artisans have not been making any money, zero, cuz of the closure. So we put $828,637 to help those that are struggling for the vendors. There's also the other money for the Division of Economic Business Assistance as well, an amount of $60 million. So I know someone's gonna say, well, that's not enough. There's also $60 million that's gonna be for all business, small, medium, large-sized business throughout the Navajo Nation that are struggling. Payroll support pay, $42,123,760. And that's for the payroll for Navajo Nation, so that those can be reimbursed, and it'll come back to the Navajo Nation, so that we could do other things with that reimbursement. Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise, I know some people have a heartburn over this. $24.6 million, but you know, if we wanna keep those casinos closed, then we gotta pay the staff too, just as we did administrative leave. I know many people are gonna say, keep it closed, keep it closed, keep it closed, the casinos. But those families are struggling there too as well, that work for the gaming enterprise, that work for the casinos. So we approved $24.6 to help those employees, and the casino will stay closed for a few more weeks, and that was their commitment. And those of you that are working for the casino that may be listening, we thank you. I know it's been a struggle, you've been laid off, and you just don't know what to do. We're hoping that this aid gets out there as quickly, so that you all can provide for your families as well. Judicial Branch requests $9,633,863. The judicial branch is gonna be using that for their needs, for all the court facilities throughout the Navajo Nation, to improve them, right, as well, and to do the barriers, and whatever they need, and equipment, as well as personal protection items. I just mentioned the DED, $60 million, this is $60 million for all our Navajo businesses that were struggling throughout the Navajo Nation. And it's all neat base, you know, the work with Division of Economic Development, JT Willie. And then Navajo Department of Health, and this is for the pandemic, $75,836,16 for Department of Health. And that's to bulk up the Department of Health's investigation, we need to hire more contact tracers. When there's a vaccine, that's gonna have a cost to it, we wanna get some flu shots. Those of you that are open to having flu shots given to you, we should be providing that, so that we can prepare for the winter, so that, because people are saying the flu and COVID-19 together could be very deadly. And if we, if people get their flu shots, you know, it would be helpful. But we're not gonna mandate it, we're not gonna tell everybody that you have to. But those things are gonna be available, and then also the isolation, cuz that's how it costs money. We have so many hotels throughout the Navajo Nation that are isolation units. If a family member gets COVID, we take them out of the family unit, we put them into a hotel, so that they can recover. And that's why, again, the numbers are down, you know, we're all working together on this. Healthcare professionals, Navajo Nation people, you guys are doing such an awesome job, we need to continue to do it, don't let down. So overall, for CJY 6720, $475,666,192 have been approved. So three, again, go ahead and put that other PowerPoint up, okay? On the right-hand side there, let me go through that right, the right-hand side slide there, so that everybody understands. So that says four, it says running balance. So that says four, it says running balance of Navaho Nation CARES Fund, okay? The first allocation that we got from the Nav, uh, from the federal government, from the Treasury, May sixth of twenty twenty is six hundred million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents. The second allocation, we got June sixteenth, twenty twenty, eighty-six million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and four cents. Eli, if you could just put that right-hand side uh slide all by itself, it'll be bigger. So I'm on the right-hand side of that slide, it'll, it'll get bigger. That'll be the only slide there. The third allocation was June eighteenth of twenty twenty, twenty-seven million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. You see there on the slide, the first allocation, second allocation, third allocation, okay? The third allocation, that's where we get the total, ladies and gentlemen. Seven hundred and fourteen million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. I talked about, I spoke about the three uh resolutions. The resolutions are their resolutions, C J N forty-seven twenty. The council, and by the way, let's, let's thank the council. They're doing their very best out there. I know I've seen a lot of comments uh about council not doing, they're doing uh what they can. They, they, they move some of these uh dollars forward, uh, working with the president and vice president's office. And you know, let, let's appreciate them. Let's appreciate our leaders. C J N forty-seven twenty, what was approved and signed into law was twenty-one million, fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and ten cents. So if you look on the further right-hand side, the six hundred and ninety-three million plus, that's deducting twenty-one million. So that's the running balance, if you want to call it that. C J N forty-six twenty, forty-one million dollars was approved. And after that, there was only six hundred and fifty-two plus million remaining from the CARES Act that came to the nation. Now, C J N, the last one, we approved, C J Y sixty-seven twenty, uh allocated four hundred and seventy-five million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. And what's remaining there is one hundred and seventy-six million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. There was some monies remaining that weren't budgeted, a little bit over a million dollars. So what's left now is one hundred and seventy-seven million plus remaining out of the seven hundred and fourteen million. So what we're proposing, Key Allen Begay's legislation, uh, that was introduced as in the five-day comment period. And we ask for your support because we heard the plea of the Navaho people. And saying that there needs to be some funds that go directly to the Navaho people. So out of the one hundred and seventy-seven million dollars that's remaining, we're going to put thirty, we, we are proposing, because the council still has to approve, approve this. But the legislation that Key Allen Begay sponsored and we'll put a link on that, on the uh comments of that legislation. And we need your support on that. Is thirty-five million uh dollars, thirty-five million dollars to code college student relief and assistance for undergraduate and graduate, thirty-five million. I'm sorry, I missed one. Navaho Nation Shopping Center Enterprises Business Assistance. Those are those uh businesses that are leased uh retail space in the um shopping center uh Enterprises campus, right? Like in uh Tubus City, you see all the others, on Bashes and all the other businesses. They, they also need some relief because they're, uh, need to help with rent. There's all these different shopping centers throughout the Navaho Nation. And that's what that uh four million would be for. Thirty-five million for college student relief assistance. Housing Initiative, twenty-five million dollars. You see a housing manufacturing facility that is uh about to get uh up and going. Uh, we need housing for our Navaho people out there. Some of it will go to the former Ben and Freeze area, five million. The other is the CARES Act Educational Incentive, D S S, that's Social Services, five million. And that's for uh student clothing. Also for parents, uh, for getting them prepared uh for their child or their students' uh upcoming online classes. Because as you know, the Navaho Nation has supported that all this whole semester is online classes. And we're going to stand firm on that, even though the Bureau of Indian Education is giving us some mixed messages. We sent a letter, Vice President and I sent a letter to them and said, hey, sovereignty of the Navaho Nation. This year, we are saying, or the, the remaining of this year, this semester, all online classes. So they'll need some help. So that's what that five million dollars is, is needed for. CARES Act Needs Technical Team for D O D I, those are for teachers at Department of Indian Education. Uh, three million dollars um to help out our Department of Debt, Indian Education staff and employees to get um communication better, to get the resources that they need to help uh our teachers and our, our schools throughout the Navaho Nation. Head Start Reconfigure, Reconfiguration of Centers and Help Students, three point four. That's what I was mentioning about um changing up their Head Start facilities, us also helping those uh Head Start students, because they'll need tablets, they'll need class, uh, class um supplies. Uh, that will be available to uh our, our smaller students. D A, the Division of Social Services, that's what's D S S. Elder Assistance and I T Infrastructure for fifteen million. And that's to help our uh elders with uh telemedicine, you know, things that they need for maybe a cellphone hotspot to get information to them during the winter. They need to be able to get information like right now, this type of information would be valuable for those that are way out there in the rural areas, our elders. Propane and natural gas winter release, seven point four million is to get propane out, refill them all to those that are in need for the winter, for our elders so that they can stay warm, they can cook, and they'll be prepared uh for the winter. So that they don't have to come out, you know, when it snows and rains, it gets difficult. And so we want to put some for winter relief. Uh, Verizon, fifteen point four million, that's a proposal for a hundred and ten chapters to have uh internet access so students and staff can go to their chapter. We're trying to get it even as further out to the house, but we'll see what happens uh with that. That's fifteen point four. Native Renewables, fifteen million, fif- and that's going to be for uh another uh stage or a phase of solar panels. Solar um uh facility, um, solar projects throughout the Navaho Nation, five million for former Ben and Freeze area. Solid Waste, five million, uh, we, we put that, uh, five million into Division of Community Development so that they can begin to help out with the uh solid waste issue. Because a lot of our Navaho citizens right now do not know where to take their trash. The trash places are closed, some trash places not accepting any ref, uh, some, some trash from the Navaho Nation. So we need to begin to develop our own program and get us prepared for the winter. Navaho Nation D I T Support, there we want to put a million dollars. We want to also have uh internet available at Navaho Nation Government Facilities. Because not everybody has a chapter house nearby. But there are a lot of government facilities throughout the Navaho Nation to offer public Wi-Fi for our students and our employees. Six hundred and two thousand, two hundred and six dollars and ten cents for police EMS. That's for ambulance internet connectivity. You know, police officers and then our first responders have to do their report back at the office when they could do it. You know, while they're out there, and this would allow them to get reports so that, you know, we can um keep our people safe. Office of the Controller, Navo, uh, new proposal, ten million dollars. That's there for um subcontractors to help with the the dollars and issuing it checks as quick as we can to everybody that is requesting these um funds for direct relief. Office of Management and Budget, one million, the same thing. They have to administer all these funds. They need additional help. So in the amount of whatever's remaining, thirty point five, thirty million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-seven cents will all go into hardest hardship assistance, you know? As I've mentioned, it was only a thousand in there. Um, let's get some money in there for direct assistance to the Navaho people. And that would be a hundred and seventy-seven plus, ladies and gentlemen. So if that resolution, a hundred and seventy-seven uh million dollars gets approved, then we would have spent all of the seven hundred and fourteen plus million dollars for the CARES Act. And we are confident that we can get these spent by December thirty-first. So to make a long story short, that's the uh breakdown of the money. I hope I answered many of your questions. Those that are commenting that don't know or haven't read any press release or don't go on these types of uh town halls, please let them know. And that is uh really central, centered around our folks that are in need of um assistance right away, that are having a hard time here on the Navaho Nation. And we appreciate everybody's prayers and support. So that's it. I know it took a long time, but I had to tell you what's going on with the money. That's transparency. And um, and answer all those questions that you have on the comments. So those of you that are saying, what about me? I, you know, I challenge you to volunteer at your local chapter house to help Navaho people, and then you'll realize how some of our people are struggling out there. And uh for Vice President and I, we've been on, out there, we're still out there, even on checkpoints, uh, dealing with people one-on-one and helping them get through this pandemic. And at the same time, letting everybody know, don't stop. Don't stop wearing masks. Don't stop social distancing. Don't stop uh washing your hands and stay at home as much as you can. You don't have to go and travel. You don't have to go sightsee. I see a lot of those on the internet. Oh, what about I'm over here with your family taking a picture? I mean, you can, one year through this public health pandemic, stay home. There's a lot of things to do at home with your family as well. So I challenge you to do that. And don't forget, U S Census. Vice President, over to you. Thank you. Take it away.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. Yeah, well, um, what a, what a great uh update that was. Just like I told you, shit, the net. Um, President is uh got the data and we have a great cabinet that, and professionals that bring us this data and we're able to um use it and share and also make decisions, you know, that's really the key. And that's why we pray, we first commit it to the Lord and then we use the wisdom that's given to us and uh use the data. And uh, you know, yesterday we had a, a low number of uh COVID positive cases and with one death. And uh, it's an homage to you all, my President, you know, gives people all the credit, and I do too. And uh, you know, we um are, are closing this out. It's the ninth inning. And uh, we need to uh bring in, you know, a, a, a great um cast of people to continue to uh work this hard and mitigate and to uh get rid of this COVID uh virus off of our nation. And you all are part of that. We thank you for that. Thank you for, for uh, you know, washing your hands and wearing your masks. I see a lot of people, many, many people are wearing their masks. Uh, and the ones that uh don't have their masks on out there, they catch your eye, right? And so some of you are probably going and just give them a mask. You don't have to uh yell at them or anything. You just give them a mask and say, oh, sure, they protect your people. So we appreciate that. And that's the kind of leadership we're getting and seeing from our President, Jonathan Miss. And so here at OPVP, we um are thankful for the opportunities that we do have. And uh, as you know, this is uh the COVID um update town hall that we have. And uh, we give out information, we uh, you know, encourage, we advise, we uh, we pray. We uh, gosh, we've done a lot of things on these uh COVID nineteen town hall updates. And I think really, I, I think what President has always been about is that the transparency. And so, as you know, last week, our President was on the Democratic National Convention and uh too much fanfare. And, and also, uh, you know, Vice President here has been invited to be uh this evening on the Republican National Convention. And yeah, it's no secret, we are split ticket and we are uh, you know, working both sides. Uh, we are well-represented in Washington. We are well-represented in uh the state. We are well-represented all across the land. And you know, I'm thinking, you know, if our people were to merely see that and not be as critical. But uh, you know, you can't please them all. And I just encourage, and I thank you for all the comments and for many of you out there chimed in and, you know, the spirited comments that have come in. And uh, you know, prayerfully, I would just ask our people to uh, you know, really check the spirit in which those comments are made. That's all I have to say about that. So again, we appreciate those comments and uh this is uh the greatest country on earth, right? Uh, free speech, free uh uh minds and, and, and the like. And so we appreciate it. So uh, now there is no uh, no animosity. It's just that the, the times, you know, I sho- I so understand the times. And um, you know, it's just one of the things that, that you prayerfully go about and do your business, do what you know you can do. Uh, where's, you know, uh, uh, the plan leading you? Where's uh our Heavenly Father leading you? And it's through that you gain confidence and do it. And so President Jonathan is, has been doing a tremendous job in leading our nation. You know, we were uh once in the, the peak of the COVID nineteen virus and, you know, and all heck was breaking loose everywhere. And yet there was this still calm at the top. Uh, President was uh leading by example and uh we all followed suit. And so as we come down, our numbers have flattened, you know, the economies are opening up. And there's always, there was always that tension, you know? Open up, stay closed, protect lives. And then we've always been about that and weighing all the data from all of our cabinet and our professionals and uh, you know, uh, it's not any one person, any two people. It's not any, you know, twenty people. It's really the leadership of the nation and the wisdom and the, the council that we receive uh to find us here where we are at uh the present time. So the number's looking good again, but President says, right, don't, don't let up, don't let up, you know? So we need to continue to uh be vigilant and stay the course, stay the course. And so naturally, um, I think it was our, our own President who says, well, you know, I guess they have to balance it out. And so I, again, just being transparent and being open and uh, you know, uh, we will, um, Vice President will be on the Republican National Convention and uh will be uh airing a message, a video message. So uh, tune in. I encourage you all, even if you don't uh, you know, uh, agree with it, you know? And that's how, uh, that's why we're the, the, the greatest country on earth. We have uh the ability to, to do and, and see things and, and be uh, you know, uh, first in a lot of things. And so we are the largest Indian tribe across the land, North America, you know? We are, and, and we should take those opportunities to chime in, to uh stand, to be counted, to uh, you know, uh, uh, advocate for our people. We have a great impact. We have a great voice, a loud voice. And you know, unified, unified all across. And this, we challenge some of our people, you know? Unified, the Navaho Nation could do wonders. They could effect great change. Not only for our Navaho Nation, but for Indian country as well. So that is what motivates me. That is what uh, you know, I guess I, I'd like to do and see for our people. Just to, to have options, you know, some of our people. We don't have options. And uh, as a businessman, I, I've had options uh since I came. You know, some of our people, we don't have options. And uh, as a businessman, I've, I've had options uh since I can remember and uh you know, not to say I'm better than anybody, but because of past decisions, we're, we're better off, you know, in a lot of respects. And you know, again, I'm, I'm no better. Uh try to remain humble, pray, tithe, give the money away, uh feed it into ministries, you know, you stay humble and then God certainly uh does direct. And so as we go into this vice presidency, that's how uh nothing's changed really, you know, still uh even keeled, rooted in, in scripture, prayerful, uh just worshiping and um that's, that's who you have as uh the Vice President of the Navajo Nation. And so we'll certainly continue to uh follow our president, Jonathan Nez's leadership. Yeah, great humble man, great uh man of God and uh you know, truly a love for the people. And uh just like Paul said in the Bible, he says, mimic me, mimic me. Well, I try to mimic our, our president as well as we go forth into this uh Nez-Lizer uh administration. So a year, merely a year and uh several months, seven months, eight months, eight months into, you know, our administration and uh some of you said, you know, well, you know, I don't see no change as well. You know, we haven't seen change as much for twenty, forty years, you know. Um it takes time. And so certainly, we are have seven hundred and fourteen million dollars in which to create change and uh we're working with the Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council and we're almost there. We're almost there. And uh, you know, just a, a short while, you'll start seeing shit in there. You'll start seeing the cranes, the, the heavy equipment moving in on those projects that, you know, have been there for a while and great minds have collaborated and thought about it and put their uh you know, pencil to the test and uh, you know, change the plans. And yet here we are and we're needing to spend all that money by uh December thirty-first. You know, it takes time and all these minds and great, great ideas, you know, uh, it's gonna be something once, you know, it all comes to fruition and we'll look back and say, wow, you know, that, that's great. And you know, if I know uh president and I, you know, we won't take credit, we'll, we'll give it to all those that are laying and working these projects. Uh that's just, you know, something that uh we need to do. Um and then then, you know, create a government that, 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 that does that. You know, doesn't take credit and then it just passes it on. And then, you know, those worthwhile projects are able to come to fruition for the benefit of the people. And so, you know, that, that's kind of what, what's on my heart this morning. This, uh, yes, it's still this morning. But yeah, God bless America. We appreciate that. You know, on another note, president and I, uh, we continue to work with our cabinet and uh many others on the important issues and topics and, you know, they, they, they do take time. So we appreciate our many cabinet members who are working diligently, feverishly on bringing these projects to, to um fruition. So um, you know, um, one of these things that uh I think is right now, this current time, uh it's a very exciting time. It's also a crisis, right? You know, but another definition, you know, Chinese problem, you know, crisis is uh, another definition is opportunity. And so I see it all across the land, all across the world, actually. Opportunities springing up, businesses closing, but new ones popping up, you know, there will be something to replace those things that are lost. And so as our world changes, uh some of you remember, you know, I, I coined the phrase, uh, you know, the only, the only thing that stays the same in business is change. And so as we fashion a future for our nation here, you know, that's one thing you'll see is change. Uh we'd like to bring more supermarkets to our nation, right? Now, we, we are a food desert. How do you do that? Well, you know, you have to plant the seeds. You have to, you know, look for those uh, those areas that are need these stores and then work with those, you know, that are able to help us bring this to fruition. And so that's what we do day in, day out, you know, pray about it and uh hopefully there's gonna be some, some things that will, will shift and so we'll see these come to fruition. So you know, one of the things that we will, and president and I have always said is that we hope that we come out of this pandemic change, forever change, you know, for the better, right? How can we become better? Well, by one degree, you know, you could change the state of water from boiling two hundred and eleven degrees, it won't boil. One more degree of extra effort. Now the water starts to boil. You change the state and the nature of that water. It becomes energized. It creates it, uh creates steam and energy. And so one degree can really change, you know, the state of something. And so we pray for that for our nation, one degree of extra effort, one degree of meeting, uh, you know, uh and collaborating, one degree of offering, uh, you know, walking across the street, offering, you know, a different idea, accepting somebody's idea. One more degree can bring great change. And so here we are in this pandemic with great opportunities before us. And so we're working on those, you know, some of you have heard. You know, there was the Remington deal, which is still out there and it's in the public now. So I'm not disclosing anything. We shouldn't. The, the nation is still in line for that. If they so choose, great opportunity. Again, there's uh, you know, refineries closing down in our area, you know, does the nation wanna go and uh buy a refinery and, you know, be able to uh develop its own gas, its own fuels. So there, there's just opportunity and they demand to, at least for us to kick the tires, right? Leave no stone unturned. Do our due diligence. Is this something the nation can fashion for itself and leave an inheritance for its children's children? Well, that's what we're about and that's what we're doing here. So we're working many things, so many different other opportunities that we can't discuss right now, just, you know, uh, just they're out there, they're ideas. And so I'm very excited about the times that we're in. Healthcare wise, certainly COVID nineteen has, you know, elevated the Navajo Nation into the eyes of the world. And um we stand a great opportunity here to improve healthcare and every, and what it looks like here on Navajo. And so, you know, we have a myriad of uh, of uh, of healthcare initiatives, you know, enhanced facilities potentially, uh better care, better methods, you know, telehealth, all these things, vaccine trials, you know, the Navajo Nation involved with all these and on and on. These are exciting times. So certainly this is where you'll get the news. So stay tuned uh for future uh town hall updates, you know, there. And there will be. You know, economically, uh businesses have seen the worst and our entrepreneurs are resilient, right? And um and there will be many more business opportunities that, you know, we'll come. I just mentioned the grocery stores, how we want to enhance the number that's here on our nation. And you know, we'll continue to look for those opportunities, uh the Buy Navajo, Buy Local, you know, uh some of you are doing that. You're staying home and you're listening to leadership here and you're buying your, your products locally and, you know, I, I did, I took the whole forty-five and fifty minutes, one of these town halls a few months ago to explain why prices are higher here on Navajo. When we start creating things, when we start manufacturing things, whatever they are, PPEs, right? I mean, we're, we're manufacturing gloves and they're going out and that's great. You know, when we start doing more creating here on Navajo, we'll start seeing those supplies coming in, replenishment will come in and they will be cheaper. Prices will come down because there's the promise of an export going out. We're taking out whatever it is, you know. Again, PPEs, whatever we're manufacturing, you know, and we're doing it at a small clip right now, you know, masks, you know, gloves. You know, sometime real, real, in the real near future, there will be more exporting going out. Our prices coming in will get lower. And so uh there'll be a time, I said it all along, critical mass, critical mass is when you start growing in spite of what you do. Right? So, you know, we have a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand and we'll probably hear this from uh Arben Mitchell, who will give a report here shortly. A hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand of our Dine people live here. I called us consumers, right? We're consuming, right? We're just not consuming a whole, a whole lot here on Navajo because we're going to border towns and we're giving other people our money. And so I just wanted to, um, I think my, uh, my battery's dying. Oh no, I better plug it in. So uh pardon me, please bear with me. And I would apply my battery and uh use power because I'm getting into the meat and potatoes of what I'm talking about. My apologies. As you know, um town halls, these things are real, they're real. And so anyway, um, you know, some people have been wondering, you know, why I've been putting my support out there for President Trump. And I don't mean for this to sound like a, a you know, stumping or whatnot, but you know, as a businessman, I do see the opportunities that Navajo, and we've always had these opportunities here. It's just how do you mine them? How do you excavate them? How do you bring great minds and collaborate? How do you attract financing to come to Navajo? Well, right now, opportunity zones are there. I see billions of dollars coming to Navajo. You know, large projects, maybe even trillions because it is a method right now that's proven all across the land. It's, it's, it's changing depleted neighborhoods in our metropolitan areas. If those of you don't know about opportunity zones, Google it, chime in, find out, learn about opportunity zones. We have a great portion of our Western Navajo agency has, is all opportunity zone. Man, I tell you, I see resorts. I see development happening. I see bringing water to Western agency. I see it. Those projects, I'm not bringing anything new to the Navajo Nation. Those projects have been there in the works for ten, for fifteen, for twenty years. Guess what? Right now, money can come here. All we need is a sound plan, show the investors the opportunity and use other people's money. We don't have to even flip the, a penny from the Navajo Nation's coffers for these projects. We'll use other people's money to bring great change to our nation. And so that's what I see as a businessman and that's where we've been working on in our meetings. And so yeah, uh, these are exciting times, very exciting times. And so um, you know, I just want to be able to chime in on, on, you know, uh, maybe justify a little bit, right? I mean, take the heat off. You know, nobody likes to see their name in a derogative sentence right after that, but you know, it is what it is. It is what it is. But in these opportunities, I'm sure that many of our people, you know, will see that, that uh we stand to bring great change to our nation right now. And certainly with seven hundred and fourteen million dollars, get some infrastructure, fight off this current pandemic, go into the next pandemic potentially. What does that look like? Some are saying, you know, health professionals are saying, we're gonna have a double whammy. We have this COVID nineteen and then it's gonna morph into something else. What is that gonna look like? I don't know. So we have many people working feverishly and even the Navajo Nation is joining this, this uh vaccine. What does that look like? We have testing here. The eyes of the world are on Navajo. The president and I have sent a letter to those people, decision makers in Washington to say, hey, we want the nation to be a part of this, right? The largest Indian tribe. We got hit the very hardest, right? That brings notoriety. That brings uh attention to the problems. And certainly President Jonathan Nez and Vice President here, we're elevating our nation's cares to those that would wish to, to look and help bring change. And so that's what leaders do. They do hard things. Many may not agree with it, but you know, it is what it is. And but at the goal, the goal is to bring change to our nation and uh, you know, certainly uh we pray that, that that can happen. And so um I just wanna say thank you again to all those that are chiming in. Appreciate that. It shows that, hey, you know, we are making a difference. I said jokingly, you know, hey, I'm affecting one hundred percent of the people. Darn right. Who can say that? Who can, who can affect a hundred percent, you know, and jokingly, a hundred percent? Love me or fifty percent love me, fifty percent hate me. Hey, I can live with affecting one hundred percent of the people. So I appreciate it again, you know, I uh, I um I appreciate our president for leading the way and we hold on to his coattails. All of us and the cabinet members, our chief of staff, our deputy chiefs and whatnot. You know, we got smart people that come alongside and help Dr. Fowler and uh, you know, Arben Mitchell. Appreciate his work here. So he's gonna give us an update on the, this uh uh, um, pen, this uh census count during a pandemic. Imagine that. I mean, who would wanna work a census count during a pandemic? Well, our very own Arben Mitchell's been doing that and uh he's working as hard as he can. He's got great people that he relies on too. And uh, you know, he looks to them for uh, uh these updates and working, putting in the miles and then doing the hard work. So you know, we're all in this together. I appreciate you all. We pray for you all daily. If not, uh, you know, uh when need arrives, we hit our knees and we pray, we pray. So uh that's how great things are done, you know, not by the muscle or the hands of, of great minds and thinkers, but by prayer. That's how this nation was created, by prayer. And so we'll just copy that. We'll mimic it. We'll make it ours. We'll put it into our pocket and we'll use it to bring change. And so anyway, I appreciate it. Uh the Office of the President, Vice President, we'll continue to work hard for you all, shit, the now, all of our people. So uh without further ado, uh Arben Mitchell is next with a timely update from our Census twenty twenty. So uh, Arben Mitchell, appreciate all your data. Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Thank you, President. Uh, just uh, um, just to give you an update, we have thirty-six days left and what we need to do, what we need to do is count all the household within Navajo Nation, also off the Navajo Nation, making sure that all Navajos are being counted. Thirty-six days left. Although in the home, Vice President, the COVID pandemic has really impacted us. Oh, nationwide, we're supposed to complete, we got an extra month, October thirty-first. When the pandemic hit, it gave us an extra month. Through that time, they let that was made in DC. Must don the ayah, sabeda na di tahe la, liya, and they auto be laazli, that legislation to extend up to October thirty-first. Then you go anywhere in DC. So because of that, our deadline was moved back to September thirtieth. So between now and September thirtieth, we only got thirty-six days to complete this operation. So within this, uh, within when we started the update leave, A N Z, daal khalani, since August the ninth. June the eleventh, yeah, that we started delivering questionnaires, le daal khalobahda, tietne. For household to self-respawn by internet phone. For household to self-respawn by internet phone. Household that haven't self-respawn. So since we started, we did seventeen thousand. And we have like eighty-nine thou- eighty-eight thousand housing units. So we did only seventeen thousand, which is only nineteen percent, nineteen point five percent of our total workload. You gotta have workforce. And you heard Vice President stated. Who wants to work during a pandemic? So we, we managed to recruit close to four thousand. Four thousand Navajo nation. Although in February, we were doing real good in terms of recruitment, people wanted to. But come March during the pandemic. There's a lot of, uh, recruitment that's, I don't wanna work. Up to last week, we contacted one thousand one hundred and seventy, one thousand one hundred and seventy of those, uh, recruitment. So, eh, we started calling them back for training. So out of this one thousand one seventy, we only trained five sixty-five. Out of this five sixty-five, as of the other day, we only have two hundred and sixty-two out in the field. So. So because of that, you know, it, it, it's, 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 our, our percentage rate isn't really, we're not. Also self-response. When President made that challenge on Thursday, we were at seventeen percent. But today, eh, as of, as of Sunday, we're at sixteen, seventeen point six. We only did point six percent in self-response, which was Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Let's get past twenty. So we need to help with self-response. We need to improve our self-response. We were lacking training centers, training facilities. Uh, though we're just training ten, in the morning, ten, in the afternoon, over at our ACO trailer. So we had to get close to a thousand out in the field. We're still lacking a lot of, a lot of, uh, workforce. We need somebody to work out there from eight to five or however many hours that, that you can put in. As of Sunday, seventeen point six has, has self-response. Let's get past twenty. I don't know, the communities that have been doing real good. Twenty-eight point five percent. At twenty-five percent. On the Wonder Rock, at twenty-four point four percent. Del Con, Tito, White Cones, and then the Wells, they're at twenty-eight point eight percent. Saint Michael, Somal, Red Lake, out of Fort Defiance, eh, eh, yeah, they're at twenty point four percent. So there's some chapters, some areas that are in the twenties percent. Although Chinley Agency, you know, they, they, um, they need to pick up their, uh, their, 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 their response rate. When you go by agency, uh, when you go by agency. Fort Defiance Agency, twenty point nine percent. Chinley Agency, fourteen point eight percent. Western Agency, seventeen point five percent. Eastern is seventeen point four. Northern seventeen point four percent. Northern Agency has been doing quite well within the last couple of weeks. Eh, they get their word like in the fourteen percent, but they picked up like three percent within a week or two. So they're doing quite well. We still need them to do, uh, even better though. We're at each of the agencies from Monday through Friday. More questionnaire system. Eh, eh, we need for household to bring their questionnaire. It has their census ID number. Although Navajo Shopping Center from ten to two. Every Monday, we're at Crump Point, Pennsylvania, Arizona. Every Tuesday, we're at Chip Rock, although Cayenta, Arizona. Every Wednesday, we're at Tubus City and then Burnside. Every Thursday, we're at Del Con, although Chinley. All these places, we're at Navajo Shopping Center, parking lot. Chinley and Cayenta has been doing real good, bringing in their questionnaire and us helping them fill out their, uh, their questionnaire. Every Friday, we're at Matsuma Creek, Utah Library. Although Sanders, uh, Bashes Parking Lot. Although Herfino Chapter House, eh, eh, on, 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 on Fridays. So this schedule, eh, eh, August schedule. September, the last month of the operation, we might be adding some more. From, uh, New Mexico, uh, governor's office, and then also some other areas in Gell. So we'll be adding some more sites. Eh, eh, we'll be doing questionnaires every day. On one of the Saturdays, uh, in September. Navajo Nation Fair. Because we're not having the fair, we might just have a questionnaire fair over the, over the census. Although every Wednesday, every Thursday, could, eh, update, where we are on the percentage. Although within certain chapter areas. Self-response. Thank you.
I currently serve as a Division Director of Human Resources. Welcome, everybody. Thank you to all the listeners. I'd like to first and foremost acknowledge all our Navajo Nation employees, enterprise employees. Thank you for coming back to work. Some of you I know are still telecommuting. I appreciate your services to our Navajo Nation people. And I'd like to acknowledge all the supervisors, managers, and directors. Thank you. Although Mr. President, Vice President, Chief of Staff, Deputy, thank you for another opportunity to speak here this morning or this afternoon. We are currently in the process of a gradual reopening. And, and as of today, we're about between seventy-five, close to eighty percent that are back at work. And the other percentage are still telecommuting or are now on a flexible work schedule. So that's pretty much what I'd like to share, and I want to thank all the employees that are back at work. We do ask our employees to continue wearing their PPE, their masks, using the hand sanitizer, keeping the social distance. We are looking at some of the office reconfiguration. We have some offices that are continuing to take temperature, uh, checks on our employees before they come to, before they come into work and after they get off work. We do have our Navajo Occupational Safety and Hazard Administration that are making their rounds. They are not issuing any citation at this time, but providing guidance and appropriate, making sure that the masks are being worn appropriately, and then also making sure that our employees are within six feet apart within their office. A lot of these assessments are done on the personnel when our NOSHA personnel comes to your office area. They're not there to, again, they're not there to issue any citations, but to give guidance and education on the proper wear of our PPEs. If there are some information that needs to be brought to the attention of management, their supervisor, it does go through the proper process. And a lot of these assessments are shared with our division leaders every Friday. These are just walkthroughs that we do. Our Department of Personnel Management does have a flexible work schedule policy and procedure in place. We have a telecommuting policy and procedure that's also in place. And, you know, one of the things that we need to put in place, I mean, this pandemic has really taught us a lot and is teaching us a lot of areas that we need to improve on. One, one particular item that we're looking into is following the proper chain of command processes and procedures. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. We also wanna thank all of you that are adhering to our public health orders. We still have a travel restriction for our employees. We ask that you continue to abide by our curfews. And as the president has stated earlier, these contact tracers are really, you know, are hard workers, and we wanna have you continue to be truthful of your whereabouts. And as our Division of Human Resources, we do have each division, uh, where was asked to provide guide for our Navajo Nation employees. And within our division, I oversee twelve programs, which is our Department of Personnel Management, Staff Development, the Office of Naval Labor Relation. We also have the Office of Vital Records, our Office of Background Investigation. We have our Navajo Occupational Safety, we have the Retirement Services Department. We have the Navajo Nation, uh, TV and Film. We have our Divi- Department of Child Support, Workforce Development, our own administration office, and we also oversee the Navajo Nation Band. So these programs are all, uh, essential with limited service, with the exception of the band. And as an essential program, we are to remain open for our customers. And with limited services, you can call ahead. And what I've been really doing is educating daily ever since this pandemic. When you're in a central program, when you have customers that are calling, please respond in a time, provide a timely response, whether it's by email or by phone. Now, kid, the D C. Ma, Ash, who, the, the, which, the, the. So it's really important that we continue to educate our employees to provide a timely response by email and phone. I'm gonna share a document. And within that document, we have what is called, um, a division. Each division has a human resource guide. Um, Eli, can you see it? Okay. So if you look at our Division of Human Resource Guide, it does indicate the Navajo Nation Executive Branch COVID. And if you click on the, the, the light there, it shows you the executive branch guidelines. Also shows you the reopening. Work site safety guidelines, and then you can go down and so forth and read up on our reopening plan. This reopening plan, you know, we're currently in the orange. So it lists all the policies and procedures to prevent the spread. So this is the overall reopening. If you look under Department of Personnel Management. If you wanna know about the COVID leave, it's right there, flexible work schedule. So if you look at that, you know, you have the alternative work. So it was released to our DIT, so all our Navajo Nation employees should have, have this information. It's called our resource guide. And then it has CPM, also our OBI, Office of Background, and then NOSHA. I know there's a lot of, uh, families that have lost loved ones, and they come to our vital record office and search for getting all these prepared, uh, documentation. They are open, there is a number on the door. I know some of you have been trying to knock on the door. There's a building right next to it, that's where we're located. But there are phone numbers, and I've also attached the, um, the next piece, which is our Division Directory. And we've also included this for your resource. Although the, um, we are respectfully asking that you all do prepare for the winter We, we have to plan ahead. You know, we, we get things done. So work with your family. We want you to continue to educate, um, individuals using your language. Public service announcement as well that, um, that we're releasing. And listen out for me on KT then. And ladies and gentlemen, we, every day, we find out some areas that we need to improve on. And we, as the Navajo Nation, are doing our best with the ability that we have. Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President, leadership. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jill Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fowler, for all those comments, um, eh, for the introduction. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I am the Executive, Executive Director for Navajo Department of Health. Um, my name is Jill Jim, and my clans's are, I'm born for the, or I'm of the Red People, Reed People Clan and born for the Red Shriek Running Into Water Clan, and I'm originally from Navajo Mountain. Credy, um, ni la tona, tona tona da kisdo. Credy, um, nela credy chi don, hinze. Da 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 esbalo do. Credy, ah, tana kigodo. Um, credy, ah, shda da hallenodo. a'tan ch'naklego do um krei di a'shteta' hashno do a'ahoga do don hinshibey' don da nishige ahut'a she'ya'at'et o krei di de'kosuntra'gi nas'taita' zada um yago wetan'ehni tsindo krei di beheta'hanata'stoto belagana' ach'ach'inde' ye'ko krei di yononashk'todo ehehe na'ngadi ni do da isinashagi. So good afternoon. I just wanted to go over some preventive measures again regarding the command response. Um, we're appreciative of um everyone that has supported the Health Command Center and all the partners that we have, including healthcare facilities, um, community health representatives, behavioral health, um CDC, FEMA. Um, they're strong partners that are still here in the, in the operation center and also responding to the COVID nineteen. So every day we have meetings under the Command Center. Uh, Mr. David Nez is our current Incident Commander. And we work with um everyone that I mentioned on a daily basis in detecting, preventing, and treating, and responding to COVID nineteen everywhere from the community to the hospital. Uh, we are, we have built a network of communications to address um the response to COVID nineteen. So we hope that um this is one way to begin our relationship and future collaborations with um various um entities, including federal and tribal programs across the Navajo Nation. So our numbers are still um low. Um, I think the last couple of days, they have been under fifty most of the time. So we want to keep it that way in order to um be able to continue to um offer and expect people to um have limited uh curfew hours um now that it's nine PM to five AM and then we have the thirty-two hour lockdown that we should all be preparing for as well. There are more movement across the Navajo Nation and we have to still be vigilant in making sure that we are still taking preventative measures. There are still uh reports of either flea markets or al- also roadside markets, which are still not allowed. Also, um, any food sales are not allowed as well. So just to ensure for your safety, um, know that those types of activities are not allowed, any kind of large mass gatherings of anything. Um, there are um, as I drove around on Saturday, there are still people that are still um having birthday parties. I mean, those types of things are really still advisable not to do any celebrations, especially if there are individuals not coming from your immediate household, coming to these birthday parties or events. So just ensure that um those, those preventive measures are still very important that we still follow in order to keep the numbers down. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead and go into the um presentation here where we'll give you an idea of um things that I like to go over just so that we have an idea of prevention in general. Um, stop the spread. This is a flyer that we're still intending to disseminate across the Navajo Nation. It says, "A gesture and a reminder to still wear your mask um every day in public and indoors. Um, maintain six feet of physical distance. Wash your hands with soap and water. And also disinfect common um areas in your home or your vehicle and wherever you go to do your errands. Also to continue to um use hand washing as your prevention for COVID nineteen and also that the flu season is coming up. These are all prevention of flu season um as this is coming up. So as we indicated before, um, the COVID nineteen is somewhat a respiratory disease, but also um, we're also finding out that it does impact other health organs in your body and so, um, but primarily it is still um contract or if you can get infected the same way as you would with flu. Um, so continue to wa- wash your hands, make sure it's completely wet, um, apply enough soap to cover all hand surfaces. Also rub hands together and um scrub everywhere as well. Also rinse hands, rinse hands with water and also um dry hands completely using a single towel or air dry as well. So these are just some basic steps um that you can continue to practice every day. Also, if you're, if you had COVID nineteen or you think you had COVID nineteen or been around someone with COVID nineteen, uh it's very important to continue to um think of those adults that have underlying health conditions. Make sure you stay home and stay away from people. So if you think you had um COVID nineteen and you had symptoms, um, when you want to be or can be around people is at least ten days since symptoms first appeared. Also at least um twenty-four hours since last fever without using a fever reducing medication such as ibuprofen or Tylenol. And that symptoms have improved over town ti- times, excuse me. If you tested positive and you had no symptoms, which we also refer to as asymptomatic individuals, um, you might want to consider that um you can be around others after ten days um since uh ten days has passed since your test. Um, also continue to have no symptoms. So for anyone that has been around a person with COVID nineteen, it's important to quarantine for fourteen days after exposure on the time it takes to develop um illness. So the indication for quarantine is uh, is being identified as a close contact. So if you were someone um around someone fifteen minutes or longer or less and less than three feet and especially without a mask, you are very high risk and should be under quarantine. So just as a reminder to continue to look at those precautions. And as I mentioned about asymptomatic individuals, um, we do have enough data that forty, about forty-four, forty-five percent of our cases were between eighteen and forty-four. We also know that uh more than half, um, a lot of our cases, I should say, are um, are the fatality data of people that have passed from COVID nineteen or those that are older past age sixty-five. So you probably need to consider as we are um seeing more cases with younger individuals, um, their symptoms all vary and you could see more people that are asymptomatic. So we really have to be careful and identify if you have been around someone that has been positive and you're not experiencing symptoms, you could easily be spreading the virus without knowing. So you have the power to protect yourself and your family and friends and always um take precautions by wearing a mask, staying six feet apart, washing your hands and staying home is the best um option and also the less r- risk that you have in getting um infected with COVID nineteen. As the schools are reopening and um at some point, everything is virtual. I mean, there are items that you're gonna have to consider when you're um picking up items at the school, um, that includes um food or school supplies. Um, at the bus stop, the more you people you interact with at a large gathering and the longer interaction lasts, the higher risk of becoming infected and spreading COVID nineteen. So when you do um pick up materials for your kids, do not pick up supplies if you are sick or have been exposed to COVID nineteen. So um maybe ask a friend or a relative or somebody else that can um take supplies for you. Um, also maintain a six feet distance from others, wear a mask, bring your own pen to sign documents, respectfully discourage handshakes and also clean and disinfect all items as you bring them back to your home. Wash your hands with soap and water for at least twenty seconds when you get home and/or use a hand sanitizer with at least sixty percent alcohol. So those are just important factors as kids are going back to school, teenagers, uh middle school, um students are going back to school. So when you're picking up items, I, these are just some safety guidelines to help you. Other areas to continue to think about as um we're continuing to hear, still hear about um traditional ceremonies that are happening, we still need to safe, um safely practice um ceremonies. And some of the recommendation is here what, here's what you need to do to stay safe. Recommend remote prayers and ceremonies. No large gatherings in closed areas. Limit five people or fewer and stay six feet apart. Do not attend if you are sick. Do not attend if you're exposed to COVID nineteen. Use a shade house or hogon home with windows and doors open, so increasing ventilation. Everyone must wear a mask, a face mask at all times, even indoors and outdoors. Um, even when there's, when there are a little bit of individuals. Um, do not hug or shake hands as well. And I think that's just respectfully um knowing that you can refuse to shake hands and um do another sort of grieving, greeting other than shaking hands. Avoid sharing um objects such as tobacco, smoking pipes, drinking cups, utensils or food. Um, bring individual drinking water in closed containers. So just be prepared for yourself so you don't um transmit any sort of droplets. That's basically the indication, the less droplets or or I guess you would say um any kind of um transmission of that is what we're encouraging people to do in one way is to bring your own supply of water. Bring your own supply of medicine, herbs, pollen. Also avoid sharing medicine, herbs and bundles. So keep um your tchotadine and those things that are, that are needed in a ceremony. Um, bring those for yourself. Clean and disinfect all objects used. So when you're there, it's um ensure that you have um a place to wash or disinfect um items while you're there. Eh, this could be by bringing your own disinfectant wipes. Wash your hands after or use a hand sanitizer with at least sixty percent. Eat meals um while seated more than six feet apart and avoid having children at the ceremony as much as possible. And then sweat lodge are still occurring on the Navajo Nation. Um, I just want to encourage everyone to do sweat lodges safely as well. Right now, we're encouraging individuals to do these one person um in a sweat lodge at a time, avoid sharing items. So this is the key word of also um preparing for yourself. So you bring individual items for yourself such as towels, clothing, water, pans, cups for you to cleanse yourself and uh in also to ensure that you're not um spreading any sort of germs um if someone possibly um might have COVID. But if you do have COVID, of course you shouldn't be um as much as possible be at the sweat lodge until you improve in your symptoms. Bringing individual wa- drinking water in closed containers as well. Um, preparing your own supply of medicine, herbs and pollen. Also not sharing um another person's medicine bag by inserting your hands in there. Wearing a mask at all times, indoors and outdoors. Bring a towel to sit on and remove after use, hang in direct sunlight. Having someone outside for any uh assistance that you might have at the sweat lodge to ventilate air out the sweat lodge for at least twenty-four hours before reuse. Also remove and hang any fabric um door floor coverings and direct sunlight as well. And clean and disinfect other items used. So and this could be items that you might use at the sweat lodge, might be your own um water supply or either you have shovels that you might have used or you might have used an axe if you're making a fire and if multiple people are gonna be helping, just ensure that you sanitize items um as well before other peop- other people use it. And this is another reminder, this is another place, um, we're all um working most of the time for the tribal programs where we come back to work and I just want to thank everyone for taking the precautions that they need and also following the guidelines. And just as a reminder to all employees of any um business other, in addition to tribal programs that you need to stay home when you're sick, monitor your health, wear a cloth face covering indoors and outdoors, practice social distancing, wash your hands, cover your coughs and sneezes, avoid sharing objects and in, and equipment, but if you do go into a conference room and you would probably just have to disinfect frequently touch surfaces and objects and you have to clean those after each use if you are if there isn't available um if you have to share objects like that or phones or whatnot in conference rooms. Keep a hand sanitizer on hand with at least sixty percent alcohol and avoid having visitors in the workplace as well. This is just another um webpage that Dr. Fowler um provided as well. Says the work site, safety guidelines, continue to monitor those as, as updates are written into it. So this webpage will remain active. And this as a final reminder to disinfect safely when you're at home or at work or in your vehicle, but do not drink or inject the bleach or isil any of or any other disinfectant as a treatment for COVID nineteen. Make sure you read the label because some of these items include methanol, which can be toxic if you ingest them or put them on your skin. Also follow label instructions and do not mix chem- chemicals as well. Also keeping um the chemicals out of reach of children is very important. You don't want the kids to ingest that as well. It is um chemicals are very um, could be very toxic like we mentioned and also poisonous, but if it is injected, you can call the poison um help line at one eight hundred two 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 one two two two. So I just want to thank everyone for being on the call this afternoon and and receiving more information about ways to prevent COVID nineteen at home um at your workplace, uh while, while you're out in the community, while picking up products at the school. And so those are just places that we go and I hope that you guys use these as a way to continue to prevent the spread and transmission. And we are doing really good as a nation and we would like to keep the, keep it that way. So ehehe and thank you for listening this afternoon.